Before the council meeting, so if you want to take a break. We'll talk about Vegas after you go. We're not going to have any invocation tonight, is that right? So Brent's not going to be here, okay?
Right.
So we will just open up the city council meeting and if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. And Sadie, can I have roll call, please?
Counselor Dunsir.
Here.
Counselor Gates. Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Littkey.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbusch.
Present.
Mayor Drinkling.
Here, thank you. Um, we are at the first.
Real quick, Justin had to take his son to some tryout and he's going to try to get back in time for the meeting, so he might join us a little late.
Okay, great, great. Appreciate that, thank you. Um, so we're at the guest presentation, so we have Lynn Peterson here tonight.
Yeah, we have Lynn and Christine.
Christine Lewis. Excellent, how are you Christine? How are you Lynn? It's been a long time. It's good to see you.
Hey, thank you everybody for having us here tonight.
It's good to see you, it's good to see you mayor.
It's just like old times.
I know, I know, kinda, as you were just talking, not really.
All right, well, I'm just gonna let you take it away.
Well, we just wanted to check in with y'all. Um, we had a nice, I had a nice conversation with the mayor a couple of months ago, um, to check in, but really, uh, we just want to make sure that, uh, you know what we're up to and we know what you're up to and we are obviously partners with you in so many different ways. Um, whether that's just the heart of my Clackamas County girl, um, and girls that you have with you, or uh, whether that's the actual work that we're doing, just so you know that we're, we're, we're willing and ready to, to be there to work with you on whatever it is that you're working on. So, um, Counselor Lewis, do you want to just open this up quick?
Sure, thank you so much and it's always great to see some of y'all at, uh, what used to be the Clackamas Diners, but is now definitely still C4. And just want to acknowledge that in my district, uh, sticking up for Clackamas County is on top of my to-do list. And some of that means going beyond my district boundary to make sure that when we talk about the region, that we understand that transportation and housing are issues that go beyond a district boundary. And we've got to really come together, be in good communication, understand where each other's coming from. And Clackamas has been through a lot this year, between the fires and then, um, you know, the ice storm. Um, that all on top of the pandemic that we're all fighting, there's a lot moving and changing and, um, we've, we've really had to stick our head, our, our hands up and put our head out and say, this is what Clackamas needs and we've been successful in some places and um, hopefully we can continue to share in our work together and success. So, uh, I'll hand it back over to President Peterson who's, uh, got our agenda since she's our lead, but as a Clackamas girl, I wanted to be here and just be in communication.
Thank you Christine, we appreciate that.
You guys are overrepresented.
We love that. We're small but bold.
It's, it's, it's time, it's Clackamas time. Um, so, uh, Sadie, we're going to show the, a little PowerPoint. Um, you guys, I don't want you to fall asleep, so, uh, just go ahead and interrupt me at any time. Um, but we thought we would start out with a reminder, um, the first thing we always get asked from everybody is just, could you please remind me what Metro Council does? Um, so while you're bringing that up, next slide Sadie. What do we do? We, uh, yeah, we have five areas, um, that key areas that we work on. It used to be four, uh, and we're only 40 years old and we've added a fifth that we'll talk about. Um, you know that we have the visitor venues, the, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. We have garbage and recycling for the entirety of the region. Uh, I'll talk a little bit about that, uh, the long-range planning for the region. And I know that you guys are incredibly interested in, in a lot of that. Um, our affordable housing is the portion that's new and parks in nature, which certainly we have, um, uh, made sure to, uh, get out into both Washington and Clackamas and Maltmoma County outside the urban growth boundary with our regional park system. Next. So, the venues, uh, we have the Oregon Zoo, which, uh, everybody loves. The approval rating is the highest of any of the venues. Um, and I think it's 94%. I hope you all have taken advantage of the fact that it's one of the only venues open. Um, and we have a, a new Polar Passage that will be opening up here soon and, uh, Nora, our, um, polar bear will be coming back home. She, uh, she was up just a, a little, uh, I don't, I want to say pup, but that's not the right word. When she, uh, when she was first here and she'll be coming back and hopefully we'll have a new friend coming with her, so we're excited about that, but we are also a national leader in condor conservation, as you know. And that condor conservation is happening in Clackamas County, so that's exciting. Next. We also have the Portland Five Centers for the Arts, uh, which is the Arlene Schnitzer Concert Hall, the Keller Auditorium, the Newmark Theater, the British Theater, and the Wingustad Theater. We actually operate and maintain those for, uh, the city of Portland, so they are part of our portfolio, but we don't actually own the assets. Um, that was a, uh, something that came, uh, with our portfolio when we were basically created with the Expo Center and the Convention Center, which we'll talk about next. Next. This has a, a quick video, but I just want to let you know, uh, that the Convention Center and the Expo Center were used not only for vaccine testing and maybe some of you, not vaccine testing, for COVID testing and vaccines, and maybe some of you who have had experience, um, at either or of those facilities, but they've become real assets during this pandemic. And this little video covers that.
I don't know about you guys, but I can't hear anything.
There's a video. If it doesn't work Sadie, it's okay.
Let me try one more time, I'm sorry, maybe because I was muted.
Flat and curve.
You're fine.
Listening to vaccines.
Expo Center was a great partner in helping us get set up and donating space for our aspirations. It's rainy season set in, we need an indoor space in the Oregon Convention Center's underground parking garage, which is grateful. OHSU had great success with testing at the Convention Center and as vaccines were deployed, the metro area health systems realized it was an ideal space and location for a mass vaccination program.
In these challenging times, we are excited to offer space at the Oregon Convention Center for healthcare providers to provide recovery and care during the pandemic. First with testing and now with vaccinations.
The Convention Center could be used for vaccinations. OHSU moved our testing back to the Expo Center, a site now fortified to withstand the natural elements.
The Expo Center is well-suited, dependent, and transitioned our spaces quickly. From turning a film shoot into a ball-and-all core, we're setting up a drive-in and outdoor testing sites in a pandemic. We are here and committed to serve our clients, guests, and community.
Every day, in partnership with Kaiser, Legacy, and Providence, OHSU is vaccinating thousands of Oregonians at the Convention Center. And our work continues.
The team at the Portland Expo Center are proud to serve our community.
Metro and its visitor venues have been great partners in every step of the way. And have helped us keep Oregon safe. Thank you, Metro.
So I, I don't know if any of you have had a chance to visit the Convention Center for a vaccine yet, but, um, they're doing about 6,000 out of there now and they are going to ramp up, uh, which is exciting. And I can't believe the logistics, um, that go on when you have four separate hospitals in the same space. Right? And you're coming in with that many people and that many different types of, um, health issues that everybody has and, um, how careful they're being, uh, it's, it's just amazing. Uh, a National Guard. Um, I believe it was Providence staff person came back from deployment and was immediately put into one of the major operators of the site and I, I was, I was just bowled over by their knowledge on just the logistics of setting something like this up. Um, it was amazing, so. It's exciting. Uh, next. We also, obviously, um, one of our biggest things that we do at Metro, it takes about 70% of our budget, is the garbage and recycling for the region. And while all of the cities inside the urban growth boundary actually contract with the garbage haulers themselves. For pickup, we are part of the transfer station, so the Oregon City South Transfer Station is what you're most familiar with. Um, and we manage all of the, the recycling portions of that as well and have a lot of the relationships with the industries who then use the recycling, um, products. We also have, uh, food scraps programs that we've set up. But I think the, the most interesting one for you guys is with the Oregon City Transfer Station. We're looking to make that a much more modern facility. And, and we're looking at the Clackamas Industrial Area, um, as the citing a new facility, because if you've tried to drop off any hazardous waste or, um, take anything there recently, uh, it's, it's a tra- traffic nightmare. Um, because it is so in demand and the way it was set up, you know, so many years ago, uh, doesn't meet modern standards at all. And doesn't, certainly doesn't meet the demand, so things are, are getting backed up, so we, we're needing to really modernize and, and move forward on that, so we're excited about that. Next. And then, of course, we have the long-range planning. We, we are the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region. Um, and we manage, obviously, the, the larger urban growth boundary around the entirety of the region. We do the 20-year transportation plan that the feds require. And, uh, we're working on limiting pollution from freeways. Um, there was a project in our transportation package that didn't pass at the ballots, but we're gonna go back and look at it again. Um, that you guys would be familiar with, and that was the last phase of the sunrise. Uh, and that was really, uh, looking at how we can, uh, work to make sure that as we grow that part of the region, that we're doing it in a way that's multimodal and, uh, clearly allows for the land use development that is going to happen in that part of the, uh, part of the region. It was, um, it, it was a real difficult regional conversation to deal with the existing problems in the urban growth boundary, let alone the growth areas, but we managed to get it all in there. Um, and the only issue really that we came up on, uh, from the package itself was how to finance it, so that's really the big conversation going forward to get it back on the ballot is how to finance it. Next. So the... Is it coming up?
Um, I show it on my screen.
There it is.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a bit of a delay. I don't know, maybe it's because I'm in Sun River in the airstream. Um, so, the urban rural reserves, um, obviously, just reminding you that we went through that when I was Chair of Clackamas County. We initiated it. It wasn't finalized for some time, uh, because of lawsuits, but this is the final map. And, uh, what you're seeing in blue is the, uh, urban reserves that Clackamas County asked for and worked to get. Uh, and the green is the rural reserves where growth will not happen over the next 50 years, so at least there was some, um, stability for those who own land and those communities outside of the urban growth boundary to know what, what is the intent of the region, um, in, in its growth, uh, and how does that affect you? So you can see pretty protected over the next 50 years, um, in Estacada from the, uh, growth of, and potential growth of the region. But we also know that as Happy Valley looks to take in parts of Damascus, there's still a lot of developable land inside the urban growth boundary even without the, the urban reserves, so it, it could take longer. You just, you, you never know. Um, you have to make, obviously, for 50 years of growth, you have to make some assumptions and you're not going to get them all right. Next. And then we do a lot of economic development, um, and this has a video, but I think what I'm going to do is just skip the video, um, but it, I'll tell you a little bit about it. Uh, we have been working on, uh, all of the public projects within the entirety of the Portland region between the Port of Portland, um, and all of the cities inside, uh, Triment and looking at what projects are coming on the horizon. And then working to make sure that we can establish some, uh, guidelines and, and uh, clarity between the jurisdictions about what our expectations are for growing our workforce and construction. Uh, both for women and for, uh, BIPOC community members, Black Indigenous and people of color. But also just to make sure that there's enough apprenticeship hours in there for everybody, because as we all know, there's just not enough people getting into construction. And especially in the state of Oregon where we don't have a whole lot of money going into capital bond programs and government. We, we're trying to make sure that once you get those apprenticeship hours, you actually have jobs to work on after that. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a coordinated effort across the region to make sure that we are ensuring justice and dignity for our workers, which is very exciting. Um, especially in these times of the pandemic. Next. And then affordable housing, our new, uh, a new work that, uh, the region asked us in 2018 with the housing bond measure. And I know that this affects you guys, it affects everybody outside the urban growth boundary as well as in, as the region becomes less affordable and more people start moving out. We're trying to m- make sure that we can fill the gap of 44,000 housing units. Affordable and low-income housing units, that's our gap right now, or it was before the pandemic and we don't know where we'll be after that. So this bond measure, uh, committed to make sure that we built at least 3,900 units of affordable and low-income housing. We have spent 34% of the resources through our, through the jurisdictions that actually do affordable and low-income housing uh, within the urban growth boundary, but we have met 54% of our goals. So we had thought we would be able to serve 12,000 people. But it turns out we're probably more on track to serve 20,000 people, which is really good news. Next. And then, of course, the supportive housing measure, uh, that passed in May of this last year. And there's a video for that, but I'm just gonna, um, suffice it to say that that is targeted towards, uh, basically ending chronic homelessness is the goal of it. It is only a 10-year measure. Uh, but that is the goal, to end chronic homelessness. Uh, and what it does is it provides rental assistance as well as physical and mental services, so we can ramp up, because between the federal and state, um, uh, resources no longer coming towards this region, we had to figure out our own way through this. Uh, and hopefully that this will significantly help. If you've obviously been inside, in, in the region, I-205, I-5 Downtown Portland, um, you see the signs of homelessness everywhere and, uh, the goal is to, like we said, end it by 20, 2030. But, uh, it's obviously going to take some time, uh, because there are at least 6,000, uh, homeless folks in the region now, and we don't know what that will be after the pandemic. Um, so it's, it's going to take some time. If you can only get 1,000 people off the street every year and more people are coming in. Hopefully people will see results over the next year or two, but it will take a while to, to actually serve all these people, because it's obviously, um, a crisis. So, that's what we're up to with there. Next. And finally, our park system. Leave is the next one. And we have protected more than 17,000 acres of open space, including, um, what you're seeing here in the, in the picture is that, uh, uh, there's been a lot of land saved along the Clackamas River because the region wants to make sure that we can protect our waterways and make sure that we are all about clean water and the re-establishment in many of our creeks in the urban area of salmon coming back up the Willamette, up the Clackamas and making sure that, that we, we are welcoming them back, um, and restoring a lot of habitat and, uh, making sure that as we develop, we aren't killing off these creeks and tributaries of the, of the Willamette, so, uh, that's a lot of what we've been doing. Uh, we did pass the bond measure. They will have a lot of capital construction out of Blue Lake and, uh, and Oxbow Park. We need to, those are really older facilities, so we're, we're working hard on that. Next. That's it. Just wanted to give that quick overview and then, um, just take any questions and just let us know what, what your thoughts are on, on any of these issues going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me get us back to normal screen and then we'll, uh, start the questions, if there are any.
Sorry, bear with me.
Okay.
Ah, I can't find the... I can't find the... Go ahead and talk if you guys need to.
Okay, any questions for Lynn Peterson?
Um, I, I just have a, a, basically a statement. I don't know if you guys had anything to do with the, uh, um, the, I guess, the down tree, uh... So, over behind the Oregon City Shopping Center, there's a, an area where they're taking in, uh, eh, all the, uh, tree limbs and branches and stuff, and it's taking a lot of traffic, um, unnecessary traffic out of the Oregon City Dump Area. Um, I just, whoever set that up, that was really quick thinking and I, I commend them for, for that, because, um, that probably saved a lot of, uh, a, 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 a lot of high traffic through that area and, uh, it, it really was a good idea and it, it seems to be working really well, so good job guys.
Good, good. Well, you're right, there is no way to, uh, take the amount of debris that was created off of that storm into, uh, any one of the private or public facilities and a lot of what we're doing at Metro is learning our place in terms of regional emergencies. Um, pandemic obviously has brought that out, but we are also preparing for what happens in an earthquake related to garbage and recycling and hazardous waste, and so this is a good... It's a good, it's small in comparison to what could happen, right? Um, it's a good test of alternative places for debris to go.
Okay, Jacky.
Hi, um, I understand that as the owner-operators of the visitor centers in our region, uh, and a lot of those centers having to be closed or, uh, you know, drastically reduced because of the pandemic. I realized that Metro's had to lay off a lot of its, uh, its workforce. I was wondering, um, you know, here we are a year after the pandemic. Or, um, you know, from the start of it, I should say, um, I was kind of curious as to how much of that workforce you guys were able to bring back on. Um, and what the plan is to bring on the rest of that workforce, uh, that may have been laid off at the beginning of the pandemic and what it looks like for them going back to work. I only ask because I know a lot of people in Estacada who live here, but work in the metro and work at some of those visitor centers and, um, I want to just be able to know that I've asked the question to you guys.
Ah, thank you. I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Counselor Lewis, because she actually is our liaison to the venues, but, um, when, when the pandemic hit, you are right, we had to immediately, within three weeks, close of all of the venues and lay off 750 people. Uh, we didn't want to send them out into a pandemic without healthcare, so we extended the healthcare for at least three months, which obviously wasn't enough, but when there's no revenue coming in the door, there's no way to pay people. Um, and, because that, I mean, that, there's no general fund that goes into the, the venues, um, if we can help it. Um, so the, um... The, the, the biggest issue, I think, uh, is when is it going to be safe to have, you know, groups of people back together and because we do have really great air filtration systems, um, and we've been able to have, uh, homeless, temporary homeless shelters, um, in the Convention Center. But I was talking to the manager of the Blazers and he has a 50-30-20 plan. 50% of butts and seats by the end of this year. Another 30% the following year and another 20% after that, so 50-80-100. Um, and that's just really, you know, a practical expectation, because there will be people who feel safe coming back by the end of the year and there will be those who, you know, perceive that it's still unsafe, and so, um, the size and type of what might be back at the Convention Center by the end of the year and, you know, late summer and a fall, who... It's hard to predict, but yeah, I think the other part that Counselor Lewis can talk about is, um, we're looking to figure out how to have, um, different models, um, in terms of, uh, how, our culture that we set up as we come back, uh, for, for the employees, so that it's a better place even to be than it was before.
That's right, and I think each one of our venues has a different business model, but the work that we've done through this pandemic of keeping our customer service active at the Oregon Convention Center means that so many of those shows that got canceled are actually booked out in the future, so our business model is really strong at OCC in like 24 and 25, which is a long way to get to. Um, but, you know, with the remodel that we did, um, right before the pandemic, like we were celebrating the, the, uh, improvements like last January. Um, I, I think that the business model is strong and while some convention centers aren't going to be able to open up, um, we're going to be able to open up as soon as it's safe. Um, with the local business first, right? We're still trying to attract that, like, west coast, um, business for the close-in years and then the big national and international shows will come in very strong, um, three and four years out. For our performing arts venues, um, we are going to be reopening, um, kind of with no, no real assumptions that we're going to be reopening the same way. We used to have um, very boutique service where if you had, um, a contract with us, there would be somebody who would reserve your parking spaces on the street in downtown Portland. We may not do that the same way. We're going to be as innovative and flexible as we can, so we can get people back to work right away. But not every person's going to be back. I just want to be really clear, um, on day one, because we're going to have to open smaller, right? Because we're only going to have 50, 60% of seats filled and, um, we're obviously going to try and, um, be smaller, because our performing arts, um, organizations are going to have to be smaller. And then Expo Center. We're going to be looking, um, on the five to 10-year horizon on how to have public-private partnership to make sure that that space is utilized, um, for, for more, um, for more days out of the year than it is currently. Right now, we're definitely a weekend venue. What kind of innovations can we bring, you know, to have, um, spur five-day, seven-day-a-week traffic at that site? Um, to make sure that it is a place of economic prosperity and employment, so, um, yeah, OCC is the business model that we know is going to snap back as soon as kind of the, the federal, you know, travel starts again. The other two, we're ready to be flexible, but we're also looking for some innovation.
Thank you Christine.
I think the thing that, you know, obviously drives us is not just, it's not just the Convention Center, it's the travelers who come here, who then come out to Estacada and the mountain, right? Um, or down to Wine Country and Newburgh, but we're... That, that, that is part and parcel of what, and part of the industry needs to come back as well. And that, I'm, I'm extremely worried about that, um, from two different viewpoints. One, we, we need, we need people to start spending money in our communities again. Um, but I'm also worried that the local folks who, um, have rediscovered their own backyard, whether it be the coast or whether it be uh, Yam Hill County or whether it be the mountain. They're experiencing traffic jams. And some of it might not be the best experience, and so how do we think long-term now that everybody's re- rediscovered their own backyard? How do we make sure that we can do both? And do it well? And so, you know, uh, conversations with ODOT and Matt Drake from Meadows, starting those, like, how... We, we've known that these issues have existed for a very long time. How do we actually start realizing them and putting them into actionable plans?
Okay, thank you Lynn. Any other questions for Lynn and Christine? I'm not seeing any. We want to thank you for your presentation tonight. It was great to have you back and informing us and keeping us in the loop. Um, and I'm jealous because you're in Sun River and I'm not. Um, so, thank you for that.
With the airship with, with three dogs.
That's okay, it's still Sun River. Um, I appreciate you and we thank you for coming tonight for us, so we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, don't hesitate to call.
All right, great, thank you for that. Okay. We'll let you all depart and then we'll get on with the rest of this. We are now at the, uh, next citizen and community group comment. Uh, Sadie, or is there anybody in the hold?
Um, I don't see any hands raised, so if anybody would like to speak, if you could use a raised hand function, I'll pull you in. Nope, I'm not seeing, and I don't see anything in Q and A, so I think we're good.
Okay. We are now at the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to view it, read it, understand it. Are there any questions? Uh, anything that might be? Joe?
Uh, yeah, so in the consent agenda, there's a downtown Estacada Commission appointment, um, and a, uh, Committee on Housing Diversity and Appointments. So, uh, at one point was the, uh, the downtown commission, uh, announced that there- So, uh, at one point was the uh the Downtown Commission uh announced that there's more people needed for that because I haven't seen any word. This is the first I heard about more stuff coming through for it. So I just kind of want to see when that was actually put out because um I mean, I know people that would love to join it, but they didn't even know it was open for application, so.
Talking about?
The Downtown Estacada Commission Appointment. Look at the consent agenda here.
Downtown Economic Committee. The Downtown Estacada, I think we had um Brenda Crosby resigned. Just kind of out of the blue. And I think that Matt had received an application from Taylor Gibson in December, maybe. I'm not sure, but he kind of just put it through.
I would like to see personally on my end, um, I would like to see those announced when we need people so that people that are waiting for those can apply for them. Rather than just kind of bringing one forward.
Yeah, and they typically are, but I think that Matt had received her application or spoken to her previously and it was just, you know, we had just appointed Brenda actually in December and she abruptly resigned. So I think he just. I I don't know. That's what I.
Yeah, I'm just saying if if we need something open, can we put it out there so that I guess I've had people ask me about it already and I told them, well, it's already closed because we appointed people. And then I saw this on here, so I was a little shocked. So um, yeah, I mean, it's isn't it normal for when we have openings to put it out there for a public announcement to get the applications for them? So people that didn't get on before can do it.
Yeah, like I said, I I don't know. I think Matt just had her application on file, so.
Okay.
And I can't speak for sure.
I I is it possible to get that removed?
We'll put those out.
So do we want to remove that or what? Is that a possibility to pull that off and just put it out for application? Uh, and then come back to it or what are we going to do with that?
I mean, it also is it the same story for the Committee on the appointment? Oh, those are the ones we talked about before. Never mind.
Yeah, we've already talked about.
Yeah, we talked about those ones. Okay.
So we can pull out the Downtown Estacada Commission Appointment and um put that out for everybody to have an opportunity to apply for it for a grace period and then uh we'll bring it back. Is that okay? Is that something we can do? Okay, great. Let's do that then. Let's pull that out. In that, the rest of these we've looked at, we've talked about. So is everybody okay with the rest of this?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. Okay, I've got a first and second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're at Department Committee Reports. I have uh the Sheriff's Office Report. Is that it? That's in our packet, so there's nobody here for that tonight. And then I have Committee and Commissions and Liaisons. Now, all of you, I don't know if you started seeing your commissions. Paul, you've got one. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I met with the uh Library Board uh last week, I believe. Uh, about a week or so ago and they I'm uh just impressed with how engaged they continue to be during the pandemic. They've got a lot of programs. Just encourage you to check out what they're doing at the website and their Facebook page. But I guess the big news is um the library staff, they are working with their peers to develop plans for reopening as well, too. Um, nothing is solid, is set in stone. There's nothing, no guideline on how to reopen a library uh in the midst of a pandemic. Uh, but they are working together and they are targeting early April to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. Uh Jerry?
Met with the uh Arts Commission. Sorry, I I gotta go through my head which liaisons I'm I'm with, but uh so Arts Commission, we had uh had the meeting. Still very exciting plans uh for some sort of summer celebration they're working on. There's been some surveys gone out and uh but it's 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 really exciting. And then uh collaboration with Parks and Rec. There's some uh really amazing ideas that are being thrown around, so uh just look forward to that stuff coming, but uh yeah, just uh, you know, same old, same old. They're uh putting their bud Arts Commission's putting their budget together. Uh, they might have already submitted to Sadie, but like I said, pretty exciting stuff moving forward, so.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Uh Joel?
So I met with the Planning Commission, um, and actually the public hearing is about what they talked about. So I don't know if it's a good time to bring up what they're talked about, my anything I saw there now, or if I should wait for the public hearing time. What's what's the best way to go about that? Because that's all they talked about is that.
Joel, we should not be talking. You're talking about the the Town Hall Public Hearing?
No, no, the uh the public hearing on our thing or subdivision.
Oh, on the one later today.
Yeah, no, you could talk on that when we get to that point.
Yeah, I'll I'll save my comments for that then. Okay.
Okay, great. Uh Katie?
I was just going to say that Chad had their first meeting, the Committee on Housing Affordability and Diversity. And it was a really great session. Um, it was, of course, the first session, so we're not expecting a lot of recommendations to come out of a committee during the first session, but it was a good brainstorm. Uh, there's going to be a lot of discussion from a lot of different angles. I'm very excited to hear all of the discussions that are going to happen in the Chad Committee, but uh yeah, they had their first meeting last week and a lot of really smart people who know what they're talking about and I'm really excited to hear the recommendations that they have for us. So that's very exciting.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, on mine, I had C four. Obviously, it's that time of year when we elect our chair, which we did. We talked with J-PAC and IMPAC and both groups were in the process of getting their officer. So it's kind of an officer set. This is when we do all all of our elections for C four to get everybody in place. Other than that, it was pretty calm. They're still talking about tolling. Obviously, tolling is always on the number one list for the I two oh five expansions. Other than that, that was about it. And then I went on the floor to talk in front of the Senate and the House in defense of our Estacada as far as the wildfires are concerned and where we suffered and where we need help and where we will need help. Hopefully, they listened and we will see funding coming from that, I'm hoping. Staff was really uh good at giving me the information and making sure that I was prepared to go in there. That was always nice. I want to thank Matt and staff and everybody for helping me with that. I also had Martha Schrader uh talk with me about coming out here and uh looking at some options for housing. Affordable housing in different areas. So she's going to come back out. And uh with the Housing Authority, we're going to take a look at some properties and hopefully she'll come before all of us. And we can all sit down and take a look at where we need housing and where we should start thinking about the possibilities that are out there. And she's told me that there's more funding to be had. Different different types of loans now. Uh, the one that the Red Fox was involved in is no longer on the table. But she's told me the USDA loans are out there and some other ones that they have access to that will help us from the ground up. They're a different type of loan. So that's encouraging. Uh, other than that, that's all I had. I'm going to hand it to the city manager.
I I'm going to try. My internet connection has been really poor tonight, so I've heard about every other word that people have said. So Sadie said she'd tell me if she couldn't hear me. The only thing I have is the they'll be paving at the Sixth and Main Project um Wednesday. Supposed to be nice those days, so they should get the paving done. They usually have to do it in two lifts, but they think the weather is going to be good enough to do it all at once, so that should be done then. And we talked about questions for the DEIC Committee Interviews that we'll haul, we will hold on March twenty second. So if you have any ideas for questions that you would like to see, if you could email those to me tomorrow or the next day so we can together and get them back to you guys to review. Did you hear me?
Yeah, you were just freezing up a little bit at the end there, but I think we got the gist of it. So if you have any questions for Denise for that panel, please make sure she gets those as soon as possible. Any other stuff, Denise? You're frozen with a smile on your face. That's good. I think we lost her. All right. Is she coming back? No.
I don't know, but it's a flattering picture of her.
It is. It's a great smile. Perfect. All right, well then.
That's all I had.
Okay, great.
I'll say it real quick while I'm here.
That's right. She's frozen again. All right, so we're going to open the public hearing. And I will read this wonderful statement that I must read every time. And then we'll get right into it. I will now close the city council meeting and open the public hearing on the subdivision application twenty twenty one dash zero one dash S Cedar Ridge Homes. Okay, do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte contact? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, the council now hear the staff report on this proposal. Go right ahead. Taylor?
Alrighty. Hello, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. You should all now hopefully see my PowerPoint.
We got.
All right. We're in business. Um, okay, so twenty twenty one dash oh one dash S um is a subdivision application. Uh, it's Kern Creek Estates Phase Two. Um, this is the Planning Commission's report and recommendation for you all, the city council. Excuse me. Your decision tonight is final unless appealed to Luba. Um, all right, so let's look at the applicant and property here. Um, so the applicants are Scott Clayton with Cedar Ridge Homes and uh Representatives Ray Moore and Dave Reichert with all county surveyors and planners. And the two properties that we're looking at are there in yellow. It's three zero six seven three and three zero seven zero one Southeast Lawrence Road. Also tax lots thirty four E twenty one, one hundred and one oh two. So the proposal is to um subdivide the two parcels into forty three low density residential lots. Which is consistent with what the comprehensive plan has designated that area for, low density residential. And since they are, just a note here, since they're building on Kern Creek Phase One, which was also forty three lots. Um, you'll see that the lot numbers for this subdivision actually start at forty four and go up to eighty six. Um, so don't be confused by that. This is not an eighty six lot subdivision. So this is just uh their part of their preliminary plans submitted. Um, okay, so the subject site, both lots are five acres in area. The southern lot is a flag lot you see that goes out to Lawrence Road there and has that uh gravel driveway along it that serves the two homes. Um, nothing particularly outstanding in terms of development constraints. It has an average slope of about eight percent to the west. No wetlands on site, no identified hazards in the area. Here's their submitted existing conditions. Plot showing the slope, showing the existing buildings. Here's an aerial view of the property. They're outlined in yellow to the right. And the uh vicinity, Kern Creek Phase One is down here to the south, which connects to Cascadia Ridge over here, which connects up, just for reference. Up here at the top is that new, um, sorry, wherever those buttons are is where uh Faraday Hills is going in. Um, and the airport is just to the west of the property, actually adjacent to the property. This area is reserved for um, you know, a runway buffer, but the subject property is outside of that buffer. So no worries there. And then Kern Creek is down here to the south. Um, just south of Kern Creek Phase One. Just another aerial view. A little bit of three D action there. Okay, um, services. So um, there's not.
Sorry, Taylor, can you go back one one slide? Sorry. I just had a question about this while I was thinking about it. So is that um, I don't know the name of the road, but is that that road going to be connected into that? So not the not Lawrence, but the other side with the new development?
This one?
No, down further than, nope. Halfway, halfway between. Okay, now down or left? So that road right there, is that road gonna can gonna be connected into this subdivision?
Yep, so um you can actually see here, it's captured the the streets in Kern Creek Phase One. This, I think, is Cascadia Ridge Drive. Comes through and turns north at uh, I think it's called Northeast Moore Avenue. It'll, we'll bring it up in a bit. Um, that's going to connect up into this subdivision. And this at the top uh is Clayton Drive that also will continue out to Lawrence Road.
So that gives uh that gives the them a couple of different outlets, so they're not all clogging up one artery.
Yes, eventually, as whenever these, well, we'll get to that, but um yeah, the proposal as it is now maintains the current um emergency access there out to Lawrence. Um, and then when these properties would eventually develop, they would complete the road out to Lawrence.
Okay, so that road out to Lawrence is not going to be completed at this time.
They're talking about gating it and leaving it as gravel. And that, you know, you wouldn't be able to get in and out of it at all unless you had.
So all of those forty forty four, I think forty four houses, they're all going to be going down through the new through the development down to Cemetery Road and then out Cemetery Road.
Yep, as it, yep, as it is currently proposed and recommended by the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so services. Currently, there's not actually capacity to serve the site with city water because its elevation um means that it requires the high pressure service level, which we can't currently provide, but I'm going to go to the next slide here. The city is building its new reservoir, which is a high service reservoir um this summer, and we anticipate that being finished by the end of the year. Most likely, but certainly um next year, if not this year. And so once that's constructed, then there will be the needed capacity. Everything else looks good on the suit on the service front. There is sufficient existing sewer capacity. The downstream analysis shows that the piping in Kern Creek Phase One can handle the runoff that would be generated from this phase, which would eventually be conveyed into Kern Creek. And because of that, they're not proposing any onsite stormwater retention. And then, yeah, the area is already served by the Clackamas County Sheriff, Estacada Rural Fire District and the School District, so those would remain the same. Utilities considerations. Um, so the submitted plans, this is just a sort of zoomed in screen screen grab. They show how the uh once water can be brought to the site, how all of the lots can be served by water and sewer. They have ten foot um public utility easements along all of the property frontages, which is a standard requirement uh for the city. And they've also got this twenty foot um public easement at the back of the um western row of lots. Um, and that was just done, basically the topography makes that preferable. So that's just fine with us. And then there's also two additional easements that I'll call out. Um, one public storm easement across Lot eighty one, which by the way is the only flag lot that's proposed. Um, and so uh that would be a storm stormwater easement. And then one private easement to serve Lot eighty five. So the easement here is a five foot private easement going across Lot eighty six. And that's just because Lot eighty five doesn't have frontage on a road that was included as part of this uh this space. Um, okey doke. Let's look at storm drainage. So here is the storm drainage plan and all. So here is the storm drainage plan, and I'll just note that it's on its side, so north is to the right, west is up. And so this is basically showing how the different drainage basins are separated, all of which ultimately routing water down into current Creek through uh current Creek Estates Phase One. Okay, so this purp, proposal includes the extension of one existing or soon-to-be-existing street from Phase One, which is Northeast Moore Avenue, which I mentioned just a moment ago. Um, extending here from the um southern boundary. Oh, sorry, here from the southern boundary, so that'll be the, the first one coming in. And then for new local streets, we have Robert Road here, Christine Street, north-south here, northeast Mary Terrace up here, and northeast Gilbert Lane, east-west up at the top. Um, so all of these streets will be, of course, built to city standards, and here's a section of uh what that'll look like. It'll be a forty-foot right-of-way with thirty-two feet of pavement and curb-tight sidewalks. Um, there was also the traffic study that was done for the subdivision. Found that the area is likely to have um kids playing in the streets, biking in the streets, um maybe other people biking in the streets. And so um one of the recommendations of that study was to um put in some kind of signage or striping to warn drivers of cyclists, so um these were the options that they recommended. Here's where um we were just talking about the uh emergency access. So the proposal does not include um street improvements from the basically the main portion of the subject property um out along the flag, the flagpole part, um out to Lawrence. That is because um the intention is for um those those properties that are, maybe I can go back to a more helpful image here. So the properties that are here to the north and then here to the south of the flagpole here, when they develop, they will be required to do frontage improvements. And this part of the flagpole will be dedicated to the city's right-of-way. So the applicant's argument is basically that the concern with access is really that in case of emergencies, um all of these people need to be able to, need to have more than one option for um getting out of the area. And so if we have, if they have access out to Lawrence, that's a second option for them. Um, so if we go back to where we're at now, um, they're proposing not to do those street improvements, but to make sure that the existing fire gate, of course, is still there. Um, and then they would propose also this new fire gate that would prevent prevent traffic from coming in and out of the subdivision over here unless there's an emergency. Okay, future street uh connections, so this is their future streets plan, showing the connectivity kind of throughout the whole area. Mary Terrace would stub to the north here, Gilbert Lane to the east, and Christine Street kind of on the southern, southern edge, um and going out east towards Lawrence. Yep, so I think that might be it before we get to the planning commission's recommendation, which includes um forty-two can, uh recommended conditions of approval. I'm not going to read all of those out to you right now, but um I can summarize them to say that they ensure that the streets and sidewalks are built to city standards, the utilities are available and provided to each lot. There's enough capacity to service each lot. Um, storm runoff will not negatively impact downstream properties or the creek. Um, those future street connections are, and utilities connections are provided at the boundary of the site. Signage and striping, as recommended in the traffic study, uh must be provided, and that all of the requirements of the fire district, of course, are met. Um, there were three changes that the planning commission made in their recommendation, and I'm gonna go through them um in case the council wants to discuss that, and of course, anything else that you all wanna discuss. So I'll just call those out real quick. Um, condition number six originally said, I'm not gonna read all of this, I'll, I'll pull up the um an image of this in a moment. So basically said that for this little piece of what should be Clayton Drive, um whoops. Um, one of the city engineers uh recommended conditions included that um the applicant should attempt to get this neighboring property owner to dedicate this little kind of triangle of their property so that um, so that the subject property could um so that the applicant could do half-street frontage improvements, which is normally required. Um, but it's not, it's not their property, so um they aren't proposing any improvements on someone else's property, of course. But the city engineers uh recommended condition included that not only, so uh if they couldn't get the neighboring property owner to dedicate that piece of land, um that um the applicant should pay a fee in lieu or some other guarantee for the construction cost of those improvements, and also for the land per, for the city to purchase that land. And so uh there was some back and forth between the applicant and city engineer about that's not really standard, the city, it's not normal for the city to purchase land, um that would just be dedicated as right-of-way. The city just requires that right-of-way gets dedicated um whenever, whenever a property owner or applicant wants to develop that property. So um the planning commission agreed that it makes sense to require the applicant to pay for the construction cost, that is standard, um but that it might not make sense for them to pay for the land purchase because whenever that neighboring property develops, they will be required to dedicate that right-of-way. Um, so that was the first change that they made to the recommended conditions of approval, so just to take out the land purchase piece. Condition number seven of the original conditions of approval. Um, so this wouldn't be in the planning commission's report because they removed it, so now the numbers are different. Um, but what was condition number seven was um that the applicant should pave uh nineteen and a half feet of pavement with along the full length of the flagpole portion of tax lot one oh two, so going out um to Lawrence Road. That came out of um conversations with the city and, uh, sorry, with the city manager. Um, basically thinking about past conversations that the city council has had about wanting to ensure that there is that that connection is made to Lawrence Road. There is sort of it might not make sense, I guess, uh to pave it and still keep the, the fire gate there. And so there was some back and forth about what's going to be the point of paving it if the fire gate is still gonna be there, people aren't going to be using it unless there's an emergency. Um, and so the planning commission decided to remove that condition of approval and um ensure that that connection gets made whenever the neighboring properties that are to the north and the south of the flagpole eventually develop. So that condition was removed from their uh recommended conditions of approval. And then the last change that they made was um essentially to uh allow a little bit of flexibility here. As I mentioned, the new reservoir is being built um this or next year. In the event that something goes wrong with that, or that some other option becomes available, which I think the applicant maybe will be able to describe um after the presentation. Um, so it sounds like some of the homes actually could be serviced before um before that reservoir gets built. Um, and so they basically just asked, could we re, reword this to allow a little more flexibility for them to hook up to any, any waters, water service um that the city engineer would approve. Um, and since that's, that's basically what is required anyway, um is, is whatever option the city engineer will approve, um that made sense to us, and it made sense to the planning commission, so that was the third change. And then, in case it's helpful, I listed some likely motion options up here. Um, but of course, the council can decide what they please, and I'll open it up for questions.
Hey, we have any questions for Taylor? I can't see your hands.
I've, I've got-
Stop sharing.
So um, my one concern, um, you know, speaking for, you know, my neighbors and Councilor Strobel's neighbors is the um, the, the one-way out. Only being able to get out through Cemetery Road. Um, so you're, you're, we're talking forty, forty-plus new homes. So we're looking at, you know, the possibility of seventy to a hundred cars that would be exiting on Cemetery Road if, you know, um that, that just would be traveling through all those neighborhoods and then coming down Cemetery Road. It just seems like, you know, we, we already have a lot of uh a lot of new traffic, not new traffic, but a lot of traffic coming through. Um, that one outlet for the hundreds of homes that are already here. Um, just adding, adding that, uh, you know, forty-four more houses or forty-plus more houses. Um, and not having that outlet to Lawrence, I just, uh, I don't, I don't really like the idea. Um, I think the outlet to Lawrence should be developed and should be open. But uh, you know, I, that's my, that's my, my basic concern to this whole, this whole new development is that uh, and I think that was my same concern the last time we spoke about this, so.
And I have to heavily agree with you there, Jerry, too. That was a, when I heard that during the planning commission, that was a major concern that came straight to my, to mind, but not just the traffic flow through there, but also, and we just had major emergencies. Uh, we had a major fire that just happened, so if a, a major fire happens there, or something happens at the airport or whatever, and those guys gotta get out quick. That's all the, you know, waiting for a sheriff or the fire department to make it all the way out to them to open up that gate so they can exit out of there is, is a long time to wait, and you know, that could be a serious issue, so having that open at all times for not only traffic, but also emergencies, especially when you're so far back in there is is pretty critical, especially because, you know, look at everything we just went through, that getting police service and anything else anywhere would, what took hours sometimes? So I think it's a, it's a serious, critical issue for safety to make sure that that's open, so.
Good, charity and then Paul.
So I also wrote down, I made a couple notes, and so Rhodes was one of them. Um, so both Councilor Lookie and Ten Bush touched on that. Things I always look at when I'm looking at new development, new construction, things like that, I'm, I'm like, okay, is it sustainable? Is it good for the community? Is it balanced? Is it measured? Um, so one thing that um causes me concern and uh, you know, you say engineers and city staff looks at it, but we just had a meeting about it, and I'm glad that, that water will be, they'll be, you know, putting in that water treatment uh of the new reservoir, excuse me. Um, but we just had a discussion about our, our waste system and how that's already almost at capacity. So um, it did say, let me go back here. I'm just looking at the proposal, uh low-density residential lots and associated road and utilities improvements. So and associated road and utilities improvements is, and utilities improvements is that, would that be part of the sewer that that would be, funds would be kicked into for that? Cause that's a big concern to me, um as well as the road uh situation that um Councilor Lookie and Ten Bush uh brought up. Also, I'm, I'm not on the planning commission and I, 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 you know, I'm being new. I don't remember when this phase was discussed, but how many total phases are there for this one? I guess, development, they're like three or five or, just curious, so. I don't know, maybe that was like three questions.
Yeah, so um, well, I'll answer the last one first. So Phase One, so it seems sometimes you'll get a subdivision application um that will, that will be for the entire subdivision, and then they will develop it in phases. Um, this one, they did, they did a separate subdivision application in twenty eighteen, I think, um for Phase One. And then they're doing this next separate subdivision application for Phase Two. Um, and we did have a pre-application meeting for Phase Three, but um that one uh for another property, I, I think, to the north. That one, there's not sufficient city sewer for, because you're right, so to your next question, um. Yeah, actually, the um, the sewer pump station is almost at capacity. Um, this, there is just enough capacity, according to the city engineer, to serve this development. Um, and after this development, if, we would not be able to approve any additional subdivisions in the area until the new um pump station was built, so. Maybe that was, did I answer, I think I answered two questions, but maybe there was-
You did, no, you answered it, that's just, I mean, that's just cutting it a little close for me, in my, in my opinion, but.
I have to agree with you on that, actually.
Paul?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna chime in first on the roads, but yeah, so you're, it's, it basically sounds like adding this one right now would put us at capacity. Is that, is that what I'm hearing here?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I went to my phone, cause I thought it would be better. Um, so what, you aren't hearing that the next ones have to wait for the new treatment plant, it's just that there is a um, a pump station that is um by Cascadia Ridge that these people would use to pump their poop, okay? And that will be at capacity with these. So in order for any other ones to develop in that area, there would have to be a new pump station built, not a new plant. It's not the plant that's at capacity, it's the pump station.
And also Denise, I don't, I don't remember the specific numbers that Hassan was saying um in terms of like the number of hours that the, that the pump station is going. But he was talking about how you don't want it running twenty-four hours, right? So they'll, they wouldn't, they, when he says it's at capacity, it's at capacity for what is a safe number of hours per day for it to be running.
Right, yep, correct. So it's, it's a, it's different, it's not the plant that's at capacity, we have plenty of capacity at the plant. Um, I think they told you when Kurt was at our meeting, for residential, cause they don't take much, but it's the pump station right now that's available would be at capacity after these houses from this subdivision are built.
Okay, that, that helps, thank you Denise. Um, but I do wanna echo the, the comments on the roads, living in this uh, this adjacent subdivision now. I, I hear a lot from my neighbors how concerned they are that we only have one outlet currently, which is Cemetery Road, and to tell them, hey, we've got a gated uh exit heading over to Lawrence Road. Um, I don't think that provides any, any assurance or comfort at all. I, condition seven, it, it confused me, the, the debate on condition seven was uh to pave or not to pave, but there was no question at all about having that opened. Why, why was that not brought up that, that it would just be open? Why does it need to be gated? Do you know, do you happen to know the answer to that?
I'm not sure, um. I'm not sure. Um yeah, I'm I'm I don't have an answer for that, sorry.
I would love to see it uh to see it paved and I would love to see that open as well, too.
Yeah, um I want I want to echo back to the the new pump station coming in. Um and we've had people talking about, I had someone just the other day that was asking me about why the water pressure has dropped here, even in part of town. Um they've asked, but I don't I don't know what the water is out there in some of the homes in your area, Paul and Jerry. I mean, how how is the water pressure out there as it is? I mean, if we hook up more people out there and with the pumps and everything else, is it is it gonna be an issue or do we should we wait for that? I mean, you guys are the ones that can speak to that.
Well, the the two reservoirs that are right next to each other are literally less than a hundred yards from my house, so my water pressure is actually pretty fine right now. Um but um I I can't speak to the people up, you know, up in Paul's area and Justin's area.
I I've not heard direct complaints. Um and mine's been fine as well, too.
I know that we're we're building it for a reason, so I just uh I'm just concerned that, you know, if we put up forty more houses on before we get that thing built, is it gonna is it gonna cause some issues for people there? Or do you think that's, I mean, I don't know enough about that area yet. I do know that there was, we're building it up there because we need um backfeed pressure and stuff for some of the other reservoirs as well. Um and so I know there's 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 been some issues that they talked about when I did the water tour plant. And so my can uh my concern is just, you know, how 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 much are we going to push it before, you know, maybe something does actually cause an issue, you know?
Yeah, I I don't think any that any of foothills or hillway that area is on the high-level reservoir. The high-level reservoir services homes in Cascadia Ridge area. Um some of them, not all of them. Um that it only um it only services about five hundred homes of our oh, two thousand hookups. The rest are served by the other three reservoirs in town because they're not at a an elevation that require the high, so. You know, and water goes at um, you know, most water, except for, I think, Ginseng and a few others. Uh they they usually are flowing either downhill, so the pressure shouldn't make any difference on the number of houses. It's just the amount of water you have in storage.
Okay, and there hasn't been enough of an issue with that, Denise, to.
No.
Close the concern, okay.
Yep. But with the other, the main reason for the other high level is we are getting to the point where some of these developments that want to happen do need the high-level reservoir. But it's more for redundancy, too, to be sure that we have two ways that these people can get water in case something happens to that Moss Hill line. You know, it would cut those five hundred people off totally if something were to happen. And with this other high-level reservoir looped in, it would be a backup for that.
If I remember, we had a discussion about the Lawrence Road connection a while back. I mean, in fact, I don't know, Denise, do you remember that discussion when we talked about the next opportunity we had? To have that extension made, we would take it. And this is that opportunity, I think, that we were talking about. So leaving that partially done as an emergency access versus having it paved edge to edge, to me, is a no-brainer.
But I I do want to remind you that this subdivision, if if you go with paving, they're only responsible for the nineteen feet of pavement because they only own half of the road, so that would be, they would be putting a curb in and then nineteen feet of pavement. But we do have roads in Estacada, for example, Darrow Road up by where we were at when this new subdivision went in. If everyone remembers, Darrow was kind of a substandard road. And uh it, you know, it narrowed down after the subdivision. And then we finally worked with Plaquemus County to um give us the rest of the road, but they paid us for it, so we were able to improve it. So this would be a substandard road. It would um, there would only be nineteen feet of driving lanes, so um it wouldn't be something that we would encourage people to use all the time. And even after improvements, we might want to leave the gate up but unlocked, but um we could discuss that. But we just don't know how long it's gonna be till that other property owner is ready to pave their part. But the city isn't used to accepting roads unless they're brought up to our city standards.
So what what would it cost the city to complete that road, the the remaining the remaining portion of that road? And could we recoup that from the future developer of the other properties?
Well, we we don't own that. There is an ingress and egress easement, so we'd have to talk to that property owner about that.
Well, I mean, nineteen and a half feet of road, I don't know about most people, but I, I mean, you can put a piece of road in for nineteen and a half feet. I mean, it's a single lane, you're muted, Katie. Um but the uh I mean, you you can't you can't get a two-way on there, and I'm sure there's some there's other laws, but a one one-way uh ingress egress can still be done there, which would relieve some of the traffic and allow for that emergency exit. So.
Yeah, I can't see it being used an awful lot, but it would be helpful to have it there.
There was a over Ingressham just off of this on the back roads, uh the road that's off of Orient, there's a subdivision that was built. And one of their main entrances was a was a nineteen and a half foot lane that they had off of um oh, good God, I can't think of the road that kind of Orient and that stoplight is by the Chevron. Can't think of the name of the road at there at the at the time, but um there was a subdivision, everybody, I mean, since I was a kid, I drove I drove in and out of that subdivision. Um and it was fine for, I think it's still there today even, um as a nineteen and a half foot lane, and that's a primary in and out. So it definitely could be done, no problem, so.
Katie?
Um, I sympathize with your guys' plea for the, you know, the having more than one way in and out of a subdivision. I totally get it. Um I just would be remiss if I didn't bring up the the private landowners who owned those tax lots next to uh that strip that we're talking about. Um I mean, we're talking about someone who actually owns a part of that easement that we're talking about, essentially imminent domaining and saying, well, we need it as the city, so we're just gonna take your land. I don't think that's exactly the right approach we need to take. Um the other side of it is that you know, if we are going to turn that into a major artery for this subdivision or even the subdivisions neighboring this one, because we inevitably, if you open it for one, it's gonna open up the opportunity for others. If we start using that as a as a major artery before those neighbors are prepared to um accept that amount of traffic and before we've actually made any real improvements to Lawrence Road, um then essentially you're creating a major artery and going into a a space where we haven't made those improvements and we 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 haven't made that the major artery. Um so I I do fear putting the cart before the horse, saying, hey, you know, that's that spot of land, we need to just turn it into a one-lane or a two-lane uh access point for people in the Current Creek Phase Two, when, again, like I said, you're not gonna just have the people in Current Creek Phase Two using it. You're going to inevitably invite those in Current Creek Phase One and then the neighboring subdivisions, too. And that's gonna create more of a headache and more of a bottleneck for those neighbors that are living on Lawrence Road. Um whether they be a a property that's adjacent to this subdivision or not, we need to look at long-term what Lawrence Road is gonna look like. And then after we've addressed the issues of Lawrence Road becoming the new major artery, then we can look at this little split of or this little spot of land that we're talking about. But I would be remiss if I did not try to bring up the fact that there are neighbors on the Lawrence Road who are who would inevitably have something to say about what we're talking about right now.
And I think, Denise, we didn't talk about taking down the fence or the fire barrier. He said, leave it up, but just finish the road, is that right?
Well, that's what my suggestion is.
And yeah, so there wouldn't be people using it on a regular basis, but if we ever had a demand such as the fire, that could be used. Um Paul?
Uh my suggestion was taking it down. Um I just and and I I appreciate what you're saying, uh Councilor Dunsmere. Um but the uh to to be able to give any assurance to the neighbors in our in the subdivision that's that's currently here to let them know, well, Louise, we got a gated uh area that you can go to if you need to get out in an emergency. I don't know that that brings much um for them. I I I think, you know, thinking long-term, it seems like it'd be nice to have had something in place prior to putting in all these subdivisions back here. Um you know, i- if there was any way we could have punched out to Deuce or punched out to Lawrence prior to this or even extended Cemetery uh all all the way down to Deuce, um you know, anything like that would have been helpful. Is, you know, I hate to bring up something like this, but is this, can we hold off on any any future subdivisions until we get the proper proper uh roads in place so people can get in and out safely?
Okay, uh is that a question, Paul? Do you want Denise to?
Yeah, it's 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 half a thought, half a question. I'd like to hear thoughts on it.
Uh Denise, do you have anything to say to that or Taylor?
I would just say that um there would need to be a finding that the that the proposal didn't meet the criteria, one of the criteria being that there's capacity, there is found to be capacity in the transportation system, which the traffic study did find that the existing system has capacity to accommodate the development. So there would need to be some additional finding to the contrary, I suppose.
Joel?
Um, yeah, and I mean, I can feel everybody, especially Paul's thing and the plea to get that paved and to have that gate removed out there at all, allow allow the traffic to go to relieve from there. And I know Katie's concerned about Lawrence Road and the people that are gonna be on there, but there's gonna be just as many people, if not a lot more, affected by pushing another forty-three homes worth of traffic all the way through that subdivision. Um and to have something out that far without any sort of ex uh second egress is a serious issue. I mean, if a if a if something happens with a fire from the from the airport or god forbid, a plane crash, something like that that causes a fire or a serious issue, they're gonna be trapped back there as well and and let alone they get someone to unlock that gate. That uh leaving the gate unlocked is just gonna have people move it and go out of it anyways. So might as well just do it right from the get-go, get it paved, allow it to take more traffic and give them an external e uh e egress out of that place or ingress if it will probably be used for both ways. So.
Katie, one more time.
Um, I just want to throw this out there because I know that it's not just the nine of us here on the screen that I can see. Um I know that there are other people who are going to be listening to this conversation. I want to make it really clear that Oregon law really tells us what we can and cannot do when looking at subdivision applications. Um and I just want to remind everybody that as a city council, um we cannot actually say no to a subdivision simply because we don't like the idea of growth happening in certain areas or we don't like the idea of growth um at all. If we're concerned about the traffic study, there was a traffic study done as part of this subdivision application. If we have concerns about it and we use that as the reason to deny this application, they could essentially take us to Luba. And that's, I think, what we need to steer away from is not necessarily disagreeing with the experts that have provided their opinion to us in the staff report. Um but is to really, I mean, it it I I just want to remind everybody, I'm not for, let's just stick all the homes that we can stick in the city up up there uh at the Current Creek Estates. That's not what I'm for, but I can't find anything wrong with this app actual application. There was a stu- a traffic study done and provided to us. If you disagree with it, there's the engineer's name right there and you can call him and tell him how what you think of his job or what you think of his traffic study. Um but otherwise, we can't necessarily disagree with that.
I don't think anybody here was denying the subdivision from what I understood. I think it's just extending the road is what we were talking about. Um the the subdivision is already a a pretty much a done deal. And like you said, we wouldn't uh oppose that through Luba. We wouldn't have a chance. I mean, it would come back on us immediately. Um but I think the road is an issue. I think transportation in our city has to be warranted at every opportunity so that we can accommodate our families, our children and everything else. So I think we have to really, you know, focus on this opening up that other outlet. That's really what we're talking about here, I think, uh from what I'm getting. Yeah, um Paul, did you have another question or?
Yeah, yeah, I think uh Councilor Dunsmere brings up some great points there. I I really do. And and I think something that I heard in all this, you know, we're dealing with with a limited access, we're dealing with private property as well, too. What 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 can we do short of just blocking it off and saying we discussed it? Can we talk to the property owners? Can we can we see if, you know, at least ask the question so that we can, you know, when when we're asked, why don't we have anything, we can at least say that we tried, you know, would it would it be worth asking the question to the property owners to see if that we could do the pave and get it out there? I would like to at least attempt what we can attempt, what we are able to do legally and acceptably and and get that done. Um and then if not, you know, follow the recommendations, you know, I I think Councilor Dunsmere brings up very valid points. The experts have looked at this, the experts have made recommendations. You know, I think they've they've done a great job with that. I'd like to at least ask the question and and see what more we can do to provide any access that we can for the subdivision here.
And Taylor, is that the nineteen feet with curb that we don't have to go to the other property owner?
Right, I was just gonna say, um I I'll just clarify, I'm just gonna share my screen real quick again here. So um right here, the existing fire gate stops at the at the boundary of the neighboring property that's not associated with this development. The proposed fire gate would stop before reaching the property line. So um if you wanted to require them to open up one of the gates, um it would be that gate and it would open up to what would turn into coming out towards Lawrence, the nineteen feet of pavement, starting this is this is their eastern property line, right? So it would, the sidewalks would end here and then um it would continue on out with just nineteen and a half feet of pavement and uh curbs.
Okay, good. Thank you, Taylor. So that that answers the question. This is not about taking land from anybody or, you know, uh having to ask the other owner of the other property if we can have permission to do this. This is actually putting in that pavement uh as is with the curb on the other side. That's what we're looking at here. So there's no taking of property, there's no Katie, you got something else?
It but that doesn't go all the way to Lawrence Road, does it? It stops.
It does. It does go all the way. The flagpole does go all the way to Lawrence. Um in there, in the submitted plans, it shows it being like um there's like a squiggle and it shortens it just for the sake of fitting it all on one page.
Tay- Taylor, can you bring up what the city standard is for the roads? You got a little picture on there. It's kind of want to see see something apart.
Um, yeah, the road section.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, so uh the there'd be nineteen and a half feet wide of pavement, right?
That's right.
And then our pavement driving section here is standard thirty-two. So we'll be about on a twelve feet short of a of a of our normal distance, correct? So it's still a very wide section of pavement for a vehicle to get through.
Right.
Okay. I just I just wanted to kind of make that clear, what we what our normal standards are, how much less it is and what we'd be looking at there.
Yeah.
Feature, I'm sure that that would be, you know, revamped a little bit to to fit with our standards, of course.
Yeah, it would need to be um, yeah, upon the development of either of the neighboring properties. Um and I'll also note that um I don't have it on the top of my head, maybe Denise knows. Um but I believe that the thirty-two feet pavement width and the forty-five foot right-of-way is actually wider than is the minimum requirement for a local street. I'm I believe the minimum requirement is a forty-foot right-of-way. Correct me.
Yeah, and uh and I don't know what the paved is, but because those are streets that then you would have no parking on either one side or the other.
Right, so these would allow for parking.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Hey, thank you, too.
Thanks.
All right, so we've we've hashed through this. Uh let's put the regular screen back up so I can okay, I can see everybody now. All right, so does that pretty much answer all the questions out there to a a certain extent? Uh before we move along here, uh everybody feeling comfortable with that? Okay, great. Is there uh anything else, Taylor, that you have before I move on with the rest of this public hearing statement?
Not from me.
Okay, great. Um is there any correspondence regarding this application with anybody?
No.
No, okay. I will now read the statement. The statement about evidence presented at the hearing as an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record of the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. A failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to this issue uh precludes appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, and now is the applicant in the uh, on the chat here?
Yeah, I believe they're here.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak on this?
Yeah, uh, good evening, Mayor, Drinkwine and City Council. Appreciate your time tonight. My name is Ray Moore, I'm with all county surveyors and planners. For the record, Peel Box nine five five Sandy, Oregon. To my right here is Dave Reichert, the land use planner, engineer that's been working on this project. And uh over here is Scott Clayton, representing the developer Cedar Ridge Homes. So I'll speak just a little bit and then I'll turn it over to Dave. You know, to, to speak to some of the concerns on, on the uh paving out to Lawrence. You know, our first step from pre-app stage is, you know, listen to the city and, and what the requirements were. And so one of our first steps was we hired a, a traffic engineer, you know, uh, to look at all of the roads from this development out. And so what he did is he did his report and did his analysis and made some recommendations in that report. And some of the recommendations had to deal with bike safety and uh there's some recommendations in his report to, uh, that speaks to that. The other thing that he looked at was, you know, emergency access. And, you know, with this development, with the gate, we'll provide a secondary point of access out. And I think you're all aware of that. Um, and I, I think you, you understand the, the limitations within, within this twenty-five foot uh flagpole. The other thing that really wasn't discussed is, you know, our traffic engineer didn't look at the effects of, let's say, we open this gate up to everybody. What's going to happen on down Lawrence? You know, is it safe? Is it going to cause other issues that are unforeseen at this point? So our stance is, hey, this code, um, or the, the project as proposed meets the code criteria. Um, and I know there's some concern, you know, what if, what if there's a fire, how fast can we get this gate open? At the planning commission meeting, I said, you know, how do you get the key? Well, you get the key by calling nine one one. So, I mean, they're going to get there as fast as possible, um, and get that gate open in, in the case of an emergency. And so, you know, with, with this development and with any development, the way things get built are, you know, with subdivisions. The developer pays for these improvements. So if you look at the next site to, to the east of our site is tax lot one oh one. And when that develops, the rest of the road will be extended. So, you know, with development comes the infrastructure um that, that everybody wants. It doesn't happen the other way. You know, the city doesn't step in and build all the infrastructure and then they'll let development happen. The development rides on the back of, you know, Mr. Clayton. And so it, it has to happen kind of in steps. You know, same thing with, with, with water. This development is sort of, you know, getting the next reservoir online uh to serve this site, which, which in, you know, overall benefits the entire city. Same thing with the sewer, you know, there was some discussion, you know, are we at capacity with sewer treatment? With development comes, you know, forty-five hundred dollars for a lot and a couple hundred thousand dollars that goes towards uh, you know, the sewer treatment plant, any upgrades in the future, system development fees. Anyway, with that, I'm going to have Dave say a few words and then we can answer some questions when, when we're all done here. Thanks.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks, I'm Dave Reichert, all county surveyors and planners. And also my personal address is fifteen seventy Northeast Heaven Street, Estacada, Oregon, uh, walking distance from the subject property. Um, so this is kind of my neighborhood too. And um I gave a lot of thought that, to the design of the development. Um, take a lot of pride in, in what I do in creating um neighborhoods as Cedar Ridge Homes does in creating uh homes. And um I was per- personally there for um the fires. And um so when we're talking about um emergencies and evacuations, it's not just a theoretical thing in my mind. And um anyway, I understand the um, uh, what some of the councillors have talked about and some of my own neighbors have had those uh, uh discussions um with me, just personally in my neighborhood about uh the single point of access. Um, that, that being what it is, you know, we got out fine during the evacuation from the fire. And um, uh, I, I commute from, from out, out of this neighborhood um, um every day. And um, and as we said in the, uh, regarding the traffic uh study, that um even an engineer running numbers on it uh says that everything is uh, uh sufficient there. Yeah, I guess I, I think, yeah, I think that's all I, all I had to say, um, just generally, the most the, the discuss, uh, most of the points were addressed in the discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right. So do we have any questions for the panel there, uh, from our councillors? Anybody? No, okay. Do I have any questions or speaker forums, Sadie? Oh, Paul, go ahead.
I, just uh, touching base, I appreciate you uh folks chiming in and, and talking to us. Um, we talked about tax lot one oh one being developed. What, what was the status on that? Has, that's been, that's been pulled in, is that right to, that's part of the urban growth? Um, what, i- is it, are there any plans? What's, is it privately owned? What's, can you give us the status on tax lot one oh, one oh one, anyone?
Um, I, so I'll, I'm gonna pull up, I wonder if we're talking about the same tax lot here. Um, I had mentioned, can y'all see my? Um, so tax lot one oh, one oh one is this one here, just to the north of the flag lot. Um, and I had mentioned that um we, we had held a pre-app for Current Creek Estates three, which would be up here to the north. Um, this, yeah, it's, might be different than what's shown here. Um, but tax lot one oh one is uh separately owned. And we have held a pre-app for um a subdivision of that property, in fact. Um, but not only is there the, was there the water capacity issue, but there's also um now the sewer capacity issue. So um it's not certain whether they are planning to move forward with that quite yet.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Uh, Joel?
Uh, so, uh, I, I was here during the fires. I never left the city really during the entire time. I got, I worked closely with law enforcement, um, I know the, and the fire department, I know the response times. I- in the case of a, of a serious emergency, especially if it's a citywide one, that response time can be hours. If sometimes they, they even get out there to that because they're dealing with so many other things. They don't always have people to run out there and pop open a gate. So that, that's, that's one of the big issues I have is, is about, you put a gate there that's locked up and you're waiting for someone to come and arrive and you're, you're trying to get your family out and you're, you're, you know, there's so much traffic and everybody else trying to do the same thing. Having that gate open can seriously make a difference, a major difference, especially when there's going to be the entire city evacuating out if that's what comes up again. I mean, we saw what even a few hours did for traffic um here in Estacada during the evacuations. There was lines all the way out for down two eleven from Sandy. Um, back out to almost to two twenty-four is massive. So those are, those are the things that I saw and I had a very good, close look at. And so having that gate open and having a second point of egress is, is actually a really big issue. And so, uh, the other thing looking at is lot two oh one, according to that map, would be that, not one oh one, but two oh one, would be the one that looks like a big portion of that road is attached to. Um, so you'd have to get lot two oh one uh purchased and developed in order to open that up. So it could be for quite a while until you get to that point. And I get the fact that when you're developing um a subdivision, that, you know, you gotta do what you can to try to reduce costs because you're trying to, you're trying to make money and it's a lot of work and then, and things that go into it. I get that, it's, they're great subdivisions. But I, that, the having that, that egress i- is, is a big thing on there. And there, you know, that flagpole does, we're not even talking about normal traffic flow, we're just talking about emergency response here. That, that having an egress and we, how many different times have we had emergencies in the city this in the last couple of years? It, it really does matter. So um, I, I just wanted to, to kind of give you a reality from, from a, from firsthand's experience uh, of the response time that's going to come to that gate in most cases. So, that's all I wanted to share.
Hey, thank you, Joel. Any other uh questions for the applicants? No, we thank you for coming, bro, go ahead.
So um, I appreciate the comments. Um, so some, another, I guess, an issue that we foresee moving forward is, it, you know, it looks like we're potentially headed for a, a condition to build um this roadway that's not going to be um a, a city standard roadway. Or um, and so, and look, if, you know, and, and we wouldn't, if we wanted, we'd like to build you a city standard roadway out to Lawrence Road. It's not that we're opposed it, but we don't have the right of way, we don't have the width of, of property to do that. And so there's, because not only, we're not just talking about pavement, it's the curbing, it's stormwater, um, sta- sanitary stubs, waterline, we, we want to do this right. And um, we may run into conflicts down the road if the, if, if the conditions are going to lead us all down the road. You can only, this subdivision plot is only going to get signed if all these boxes are checked. And then the city engineer says, well, no, you can't do this because it doesn't meet the city uh standards. Uh, there could just be a potential conflict down the road. I don't know how the condition would be crafted um to build pavement in a twenty-five foot wide strip of land that doesn't, that isn't a city sa- standard section.
Yeah, thank you.
That, that's uh, that's partially why Paul brought up uh maybe opening up conversation with that property owner. Or councillor Strobel brought up uh opening up conversation, asking the question with that property owner uh to see if this would be feasible, you know, and that's why I brought up maybe the city, if, if there's a possibility, the city footing the bill for that remaining portion of road and then just collecting that front when that property develops. That was a, you know, that, that's where we were going with it. Uh, we'd really like to see that road opened up. Um, living in the neighborhood or, or living near that neighborhood um for a lot of years. Uh, it's uh, you know, just seeing the extra traffic. There was one thing that a study, you know, study is uh, you know, do it, done pretty much during normal operating hours. It doesn't uh take into consideration the um, um, you know, our emergency response and, and all of that stuff, I don't believe. Uh, because they, there's just no way for that study to predict when an emergency is going to happen and then take that into consideration. So um, I just uh, you know, I'd like to see that, that road opened up. I'd like to see that it, you know, to see it accessible. And uh, I'd like to, you know, also um, you know, go down the, start that conversation with that property owner. Because if that is going to be developed, I mean, we could get the ball rolling now and, you know, um, you know, do what we can to help the people in those neighborhoods.
Okay, great, thank you, Jerry. Um, Joel, one more time.
Uh, I'm assuming you guys, uh, Ray, you guys had some sort of cost estimation on what it was going to cost to put that road in. Um, to, you know, is that something you can deliver to the city so that we have, we can have an idea if that's something that's even feasible to us as a city to try to, to do? Um, or at least give us an idea, do you have that available or, I'm, I was kind of curious if that's information you can get.
Um, so for the record, Ray Moore, all county surveyors. Um, we did not do an analysis on that because that wasn't part of the scope of this project. Um, so it, it would be kind of, uh, I'd be winging it here and I don't want to say any numbers that, that wouldn't be accurate. Uh, costs of materials and supplies are changing daily and, and uh, so it's, it's sort of difficult at this time to give you a rough idea. It's also impossible to contingent, you know, this development on negotiating with a neighbor, so just keep that in mind. Um, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I just don't think it can be part of a condition of approval on this development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I think that's all the questions um out there for that. So we appreciate you being there to answer those. And do we have anybody of public testimony uh that would like to speak on this uh in the queue?
I don't see anybody with their hands raised.
Tyler, Tyler Hum- Henderson?
Yes, I uh, I've worked with all county surveyors and I just want to thank you folks for um being here tonight with us. And I think that uh councillor Dunsmere raised some good points. And there were just a few things that I wanted to clarify uh with the access out to Lawrence Road. Uh, the way we are currently proposing that uh Clayton street alignment, we would actually only have enough width for eighteen and a half feet of pavement. Um, unless we realign the curb and require uh future dedication in parcel to the east of us. Um, but that also assumes that we're going to be able to match grade exactly if our property line, you know, which we're realistically not going to be able to do. So to provide a reasonable width of pavement, uh, we're probably going to have to get some sort of cooperation from that neighbor to the south anyways for some sort of slope easement or construction easement across the, the north end of their property. Um, and I'll let uh Scott and Ray talk about that a little bit more. But uh, I don't believe they've been really receptive to, to working with us uh through this process at all. Um, you know, humans are sort of uh creatures of convenience in a lot of cases. And looking at the existing street system layout, uh, even if we do have a paved access route out to Lawrence right now, uh, it really would only be used for emergencies. The, the quicker route to get into uh the city of Estacada or anywhere in the heart of the Portland metro area is going to go uh take these new lots through uh the existing subdivisions and out to Cemetery Road for, for that point of access.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? No? Uh, Taylor, do you have anything else before I move it along?
No.
Okay. At this time, I will close the public hearing. And I will open the city council. Okay. Now I will reopen the city council meeting and ask for a motion to approve with conditions, deny the application. Is there, what are we going to do?
I'll move to approve the um application with the recommendations of the planning commission.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Um, I'll se- I'll second it.
Okay, Jerry's second it. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Are you gonna discuss it or?
Uh, well, I, I think we did discuss it.
Oh, okay. I just, um, I just wanted to say that if uh, if we aren't going to make them pave that, we do have the ability to not accept the unpaved portion of that and to have some kind of agreement with them that once that other lot does develop, um, they have to, they can deed that over to the city because we aren't used to taking um over for roads that are substandard. That would mean we would have to take care of that gravel roadway if it is deeded over to the city.
Okay. All right, so you've heard that, council, is the motion still stand?
Well, so, hold on. What was proposed by the planning commission exactly as it related to that road?
They removed it from the, they removed it, that was uh number seven, I think.
Yeah, but we still, they still have to have that gate up there, right?
Right, but then they were going to deed the unimproved portion over to the city.
So what was the, what was the one uh condition about them developing it in the future when development happens to the, the adjacent lot?
There was the condition about, so condition number six was about the little triangle of um half-street improvements that would need to go across the corner of lot one oh two, uh, two oh, the lot to the south. Um, the piece of northeast Clayton. Um, and that's separate from the flagpole improvements going out to Lawrence.
Yeah.
So I think condition seven then is the one that, that really we're, we're kind of debating here. I don't, I think our hands are tied on what we can do out to Lawrence Road realistically. I, I don't know that I, I want to belabor this a- anymore. I think we had a good discussion on that. Um, but I think Denise, are, are you saying there that maybe we just uh approve it? But we take, uh, we don't accept their condition seven and we request that it be paved up to the gate at least? And then we would have at least an approved uh, a road heading into when uh the other tax lots are developed. So that when, when. Uh, the other tax lots are developed so that when, when that's ready, it could be punched all the way through. And we'd have at least that nineteen feet, whatever, uh, paved up to the gate. Is is that right?
No, yeah, so I I'm saying we don't have to have them pave it. Um, any further than the plans show, but that, uh, the gravel roadway. Um, maybe we could come to an agreement that they're going to take care of that until, I don't know if there's a homeowners association. In this one that, um, that they would take care of that until the time that it would be developed when future development happened.
Okay, Joel, you got something else?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say it's, uh, I I'm really kind of curious, is something that was said earlier. What's the cost to to get us for the city if we pave that and then we put the cost in for few, from when they. Do future developments, we we plan to lay that cost over to them. Whoever comes in. So if we pave it now, and then that's something that they pay for later.
Denise, I don't, I don't think I understood that, Joel. Can you say that?
I'm kind of curious is, I I really am kind of curious what the, you know, cost would be for us to pave that portion. And and open it and, uh, for the city to to cover the cost for now. And then when it comes time for the, uh. For a future development, then that that cost is is then transferred over to the, uh, whoever's coming in to develop that those those areas.
Right. So if you, I don't think that we have to discuss this tonight. If you want to accept. The, and have them deed it over to the city, um, as it is unimproved, then we could look into that, you know, as as we get the money.
Reason why I'm asking Denise is is it's going to sway how I vote tonight. That's why I want to know.
Well, I I can't, I can't tell you what it's going to cost. I. I I have no idea and they said they really have no idea because you have to look at. So many things because you aren't just putting the road in, there might be other utilities. So we aren't going to know that. Without an engineer paying an engineer to go out and study that. So, but if. Um, you could go ahead and approve with the conditions of the planning commission. And we would inherit that, that gravel roadway and then we could look at at into doing that in the future.
Okay, thank you. Katie?
I just want to say cost effectively, um, for anyone, whether it be the city or the private developer. Um, the idea of digging once is more cost effect, uh, more cost effective. If you're going to go and pave a road, it is more cost effective to go into that road just one time. Develop it the way that you want to develop it, which is usually to city standards and then, and then you have a good road. If we went in right now and just put pavement on on a subpar road and said, we're going to go back later. And and turn that road into what we want that road to eventually be. Whether the city does that or a private developer does it, it is going to be more. Expensive to go back and fix the road later on because they'll have to then take up the pavement. And we'll have spent all that time maintaining a subpar road as well. Um, I like the idea of. Of having the gate there and having a gravel road to use in case of emergencies, but I don't necessarily see. The benefit of putting down pavement for pavement's sake, just knowing that we're going to go back later and redo it later.
Okay. Is that it on the questions? And discussion? All right. So back to the motion at hand. So we need a motion. Then accepts the planning commission and says that deeds the property over to the cities. All right?
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, that's the same one we just said. All right. It's moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all opposeds? So three on three.
So the motion fails.
Yep. So what's the step from here? Denise, you still there? Or Sadie, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say maybe a new motion or. Taylor, do, I don't know.
Well, I, I, I'm still here, so. It, so what, what, um.
So, uh, I just want to say something real quick before, while Denise got, Denise gathers her thoughts. Um, just like what was said during the, um, public hearing, we, we can't deny this this because of this road. Um, we can't. Um, Sean, you even, you even spoke to this. Um, they will come back, they will come back at us through Luba and, uh. Uh, very quickly. Um, I don't think that we can deny this because of the road, even though I would really, really rather have this road. Uh, done and open. Um, I do like the idea of, uh, you know, of course approving it tonight and then. Asking that question of the property owner, um, just to try to get that ball rolling. Um, the property owner of tax lot two oh one. Um, but, you know, just like what was said during the public hearing, um, you know, we're opening up a can of worms if we, if we deny this based on that access point.
Again, I don't think we're denying the subdivision. We're denying the road issue. Uh, it's a big difference.
No, this, this was a motion to approve the subdivision.
Yeah.
So we, it failed.
Yeah, we, we failed that push as it was laid out. We can re-motion it to get that road paved in there.
So somebody want to put that motion up? We can vote on it again?
Uh, I move that we approve the, uh, the subdivision with the, uh, with the changes approved by the. Planning commission with the one exception that we have that road paved and open.
Okay, that's the motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
We have a, do we need a second on that? Yeah, do we need a second on that?
I got a second.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear who seconded. Sorry, second.
So all those.
I forget my mute sauce.
All those opposed?
No, I'm a, I'm a four. I'm a, I'm an I.
Oh, you're a four?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got four.
So I'm sorry, can I do a roll call vote? I didn't catch. Uh, Counselor Dunnsmear.
No.
Counselor Hughes.
Hey, hey, thank you for.
Yes. Counselor Lidkey.
Yes.
Counselor Strobel.
No.
Counselor Tendush.
Uh, yes.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Yes, thank you.
So the motion passes.
All right. Appreciate that, guys. That was a tough one.
Okay, can I, can I clarify for the report then? Can I?
Yes.
Is this now a good time to ask?
Um, yeah.
So. That condition of approval or the conditions of approval will include that the. The proposed new fire gate would be open. That other one just go stubs to the adjacent properties, so that won't make sense open. So the proposed new fire gate would be open and. Um. Nineteen and a half feet of pavement. Um, I wonder if. According to, I think Tyler mentioned that in some areas it might only be feasible to do eighteen and a half. Um, would you like to leave that? Um, that width up to the city engineer?
Um, yeah, I think they're qualified to make that.
The width that is feasible according to the city engineer and then, um, curbs.
Yeah.
No sidewalks. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, moving on, we're at council business, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-one zero zero two. An ordinance amending chapter two point three three, diversity, equity and inclusion committee of the Estacada municipal code. So that's what we have on the table. Um, are there any questions before this is put to a motion?
Hey, hey, thank you for hosting.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the ordinance as written.
Okay.
Yeah.
Huh?
I second.
Okay, I've got a first and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, the next citizen and community group comment. Do I have anybody in the hold?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, mayor, council, uh, reports and comments. I'll start off with, uh, Charity.
Um, thank you, city staff. This was a, uh, very large packet, especially with, um. Uh, this development. So appreciate you putting it together, taking the time. Um, I want to thank, uh. Cedar Ridge Homes for coming on tonight, um, taking time out of their busy schedule and going over some things with us. Appreciate it always. Um, I like Cedar Ridge. They're cool. Our house is a Cedar Ridge home. Appreciate them. Um, and, uh, yeah, I I forgot to mention earlier, um. I will be meeting with the school board this Thursday. Last Thursday was the, or the last time we met. Was during, was the first night of the ice storm. And they're doing half and half. They're doing half in person, half Zoom. A little too icy for me. I zoomed in and the audio was terrible. So I couldn't really report. Back a whole lot. So I'm really hoping that this Thursday night I can, um. Give you some feedback next council meeting. So, uh, just want to thank everybody, um, a little bit of a longer night, but, um, appreciate you all and. Um, hope everybody has a good week.
Thank you, Charity. Uh, Katie?
Just want to say happy international women's day to all of the amazing women, um, you know, that are here with us in the meeting tonight. Uh, and or somewhere else, uh, happy international women's day.
Thank you. Uh, Jerry?
I'd, I'd like to echo that. Um, we have an amazing group of women here tonight. Um, you know, I'm very proud to know you guys, very proud to work with you. Um, our city staff is absolutely amazing as always. Um, thank you guys, councilors, for all the amazing questions. I mean, this is, this. The discussion tonight was awesome. Um, very civil, very good. Uh, we got a lot accomplished. So, uh, thanks, everybody for. For being here and thanks to ODOT, Forest Service, PGE for that wonderful presentation earlier. Uh, that was, uh, uh. Rachel's presentation nearly brought tears to my eyes. I'm just, just saying, I got really emotional, um, seeing those pictures. Um, you know, this place that I've, you know, spent my whole adult life, um, you know, just seeing those pictures, it's devastating. So, but, uh, thanks, everybody. Um. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Paul?
Um, just, uh, I also appreciate having, uh, ODOT and the Forest Service and PGE here. Look forward to the conversation that we're going to be having with them and then the key people. Uh, stakeholders that can talk about maybe staged opening as well too. So it's really something I'm hoping for, for Estacada. That's all. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Joel?
Uh, just want to thank all the councilors here tonight. I know there was a kind of back and forth discussion and we don't always, uh. Come to the agreement, but that's what's good about the councils. We have different views and opinions and. You know, and it's, it really kind of, you know, gets me thinking about some things too and the, and how to, how to look at stuff. So I do appreciate that you guys. Same with the city staff. You guys have great reports. Um, I know we asked those some weird questions at you guys sometimes and you guys seem to be on your feet a lot for those, for those answers. So kudos. Um, a couple of things, uh. I I did want to to just make note that I've heard, um, a lot of responses already about Sixth and Main. Um, anywhere from buses having troubles turning those corners, people with, uh, with trucks and trailers. And there's been some concerns about it already. I don't know if it's just because it's smaller due to construction, but. Um, just want to make note now that that might become an issue for us to have to review. In the near future, if buses and things are having trouble turning and and things there. So. But, um, I do, I'll wait till that's, uh, fully done to see how what happens. Because, you know, cones and stuff on the road could so, could make that, uh, less of an issue, could make that less of a turn radius. Um, something that a couple of people brought up to me in the last couple of weeks that I wanted to make note too for everybody to kind of be thinking about. And this is definitely along the lines of the DEIC, uh, committee coming up. Um, that, that there's been, uh, people that are in wheelchairs during this construction on Sixth and Main. Couldn't access some of the local businesses because there was never, uh, alternative ramps or anything else put up for them. And when they had to go around. On other blocks, there's no sidewalks or anything for them. So they were taking their wheelchairs out in the middle of the, uh, road and things. Um, and that, that made a concern for them, of course. And so just something that, uh, for us to think about, um, as we're looking at future stuff. Is when we, you know, if we're doing, you do construction, it's going to shut down an old pathway or, um, we start looking at trying to pave some other. Areas and trying to kind of keep that in mind for the people that are, that are disabled. Um, and then, uh, Lake Shore recently, I got a chance to walk Lake Shore recently and, um. Kind of walked down into some of those back areas and, uh, there's a, there's a lot of trash. That's recently come back up since the last cleanup. And I know ECW is going to be doing a cleanup again here soon. Um, but it has been, uh, there has been a lot of trashes, uh, trash and some camps you saw back there. So. Uh, that makes, that'd make a concern for our, our Lake Shore area, um, and something that we might want to consider. Uh, you know, if we can start by putting up signs about what our ordinances are when it comes down to dumping, um, and those type of things. And. I see PG put up a bunch of signs about camping. So it gives, uh, like, you know, the Clackamas County sheriffs an opportunity to enforce. Uh, people that are out there camping, making messes and stuff and leaving their trash behind. But it it is definitely an issue to, that we want to see if we can find something, kind of get your heads thinking about how we can address that so that, uh. You know, Lake Shore, uh, it doesn't continue to grow the the trash on there and stuff. So. Um, and I think. I think that was everything I had on my notes. So, but thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. And I see Jerry's hand up.
Okay, Jerry, did you want to say something?
I, I just had a question. What, what wasn't accessible, um, to wheelchairs? Because every, every block. Um, every block surrounding that has a, has sidewalks, um, from, you know, Zoberst.
Hey, yeah.
The only, the only street I think that doesn't have sidewalks might be Wade, but every other block around that, around the, the junior high. Uh, around that, there's sidewalks everywhere. I just, uh, what wasn't accessible? That's my, that's my question.
That this particular person described to me was, um. They, one block back and then as you go over to Broadway and then up Broadway. You know, uh, like, uh, you come up, uh, what is that? That'd be fifth. So from Fifth and Main over to Broadway and Broadway up to Sixth, I think is what they said they were out, they had to take. To go around to, to access the business or something. Because they couldn't go on the sidewalks at the time. There was no. Uh, temporary like boards put down for them to drive, drive the wheelchairs on to get around where the sidewalks were not. So they had to go around. Um, and then they, uh, so that's the area they said there wasn't sidewalks is in that area. Uh, I I haven't had a chance since they told me to actually go there and physically walk it and look at it. Um, but I did tell them I would, I'd be happy to share that tonight during the, during the comment section. Uh, it is something too to consider, uh. Like, uh, they couldn't access into the, uh, into like the coffee shop, they said, during some of the sidewalk. Big construction area. And it was only for a couple of days, but it did limit them. So something maybe the construction company can be informed about to think about. You know, trying to keep some sort of access for the the handicap during construction. Um, so. Uh, but yeah, that's all it is.
Okay. Thank you. And on that note, I want to thank all you councilors for doing the job you were put here to do, whether it was hard or easy or. Not in agreement all the way across the board. You all did a great job. You did what you were elected to do and that's all anybody can ever expect. Um, I want to thank city staff for putting up with us. I know we're a headache. Sometimes we run long. I'm sorry about that. Uh, and I want to thank the citizens for tuning in because we must be doing something. Because people are hearing and people are talking. That means they're listening to what we have to say. And I appreciate that. So thank you. And this meeting is adjourned.